Good morning. We'll call the committee, the whole meeting to order for June 5th, 2024. Please rise for pleasure allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The wall call, please.
Mr. Barnes?
Present.
Mrs. Broddick? Mr. Curran?
Here.
Mr. Seer? Mr. Demick?
Here.
Mr. Fanton?
Here.
Mrs. Hanchett?
Here.
Mr. Harris?
Here.
Mr. Havy?
Here.
Mr. Healy?
Here.
Mr. Ricky?
Here.
Mrs. Ricket Swales?
Here.
Mrs. Rue? Mr. Rumfeld?
Here.
Mr. Stocken? Twelve present, three absent.
Thank you. Short agenda, but long subject matter today, I guess I'd say. We've got, we've got one agenda item and then we, we do have an executive session that'll follow that, after which I don't think we'll have any board action. But first up, Ardent Solutions, by board request, has done a bit of a deeper dive into the potential for some work with Oats over in Cat County. So we have Kerry Whitwood and Gwen Cooper are with us today. They brought a presentation. They're going to walk us through, actually, they're going to walk us through a little bit of their existing operations that are going to walk us through what they've learned thus far with what's going on in Cat County. And then we're going to have a discussion on that and talk next steps. So welcome.
Thank you. Good morning, everybody, and thank you for having us. It's interesting you said, Mike. It's interesting that you said, uh, see, I have a question. My first. Good morning. Usually I'm pretty loud to begin with, but thank you all for having us. I thank you, Mr. Harris, for saying the board invited us because we really try to invite ourselves. So, thank you. So we are going to start our presentation. Do I just hit that forward? So there's a lot of things that are happening with mobility in the Southern Tier with transportation. I mean, I think you've probably all seen that the Olean Area Transit System is coming to an end on December 31st, 2024. That system is really critical for the Southern Tier, not only for the Olean area in Cataragus County, but for Allegheny County as well. We have a lot of residents that utilize services. They're employed over there. So there's a lot to this that we are putting here today for your consideration. But we really thought it would be important for, to give you kind of a recap of, of Allegheny County system. I know you've had a lot of things come before you recently. We've got a lot of projects in the works. So our agenda today, we're going to do a quick public transportation overview, again, talk about our system a little bit more, get into the Olean Area Transit System and really have open discussions. So we welcome your questions and we look forward to that discussion. So back to the Olean Area Transit System really quick. We, we did meet with the mayor of Olean and their, I don't know if it's comptroller, and we also met with Cataragus County administration. So there's a lot of moving pieces to this. So I'm going to have Gwen share with you a little bit about the public transportation overview.
Thank you. Good morning. Again, thank you for having us this morning. So I just put these pictures together. I was on a committee one time that went through like the history of transportation. And I, I think it's a good segue into how much transportation is being used, right, worldwide and for how long it's been being used. So, um, so as Kerry mentioned, I'm just going to give you a little overview of our current public transportation in Allegheny County. I think it's always a good reminder what is out there, what we offer, what is being used, the importance of it. So through World Bank, a statement that they put out was transportation is fundamental to supporting economic growth, creating jobs and connecting people to essential services such as healthcare or education. And it's a powerful way for not only towns, counties, but countries to bolster human development and social inclusion. So again, just a little bit on Allegheny County's public transportation. This is just a little breakdown of kind of the way everything flows. I think if you wanted to add, the FTA could also go ahead of New York State. It is different in different states. Some states, the public transportation organizations receive direct funding from the FTA. New York State has made it so that all FTA funding runs through New York State DOT. So essentially that is where we do get all of our funding for public transit in Allegheny County. So just a little breakdown there. Obviously, we have the county administrator on there, but we also work with Terry, the treasurer, and Allison as the county attorney, who help us, you know, with the financing part and contracts and whatnot. So. We do have a mobility advisory committee, and so I'm not going to read through all of these, but you can see the different organizations that we, we work with, all of these organizations pretty regularly. Different things come up. Just the other day, day before yesterday, we had a call with Alfred University discussing some transportation needs that they have, that they're foreseeing with the new complex that they're building. And, you know, just keeping those discussions open, if there's any way that we can partner, if there's any way that we can help them. And that's just, you know, one example. But we regularly work with the Hat system, Hornell. We regularly work with the Oats system, Olean. And meeting up our times so that people can transfer from, you know, one county to the next. So just a few examples of what we do. Clarity Wellness, we do a ton of work with getting their clients to and from appointments. So just a few examples of some of the partnerships that, that we have developed and that we continue to work on really almost daily. So just a little, a few of the basics of our current system. We have six deviated fixed route service areas and we're running five buses. So we're running those five buses five days a week, Monday through Friday. If you add up every single stop that's on our schedule, we have over 650 stops every single day throughout this county. And we, all five buses running combined is 54 operational hours a day. And that is what our contract is based on. Again, working with Oats and Hats throughout the day, we have made it so that over in Alfred, we meet up with Hats at the same time that, that they are there, some of their buses are there, so that people may transfer if they need services outside of Allegheny County, and the same with Hats. And the Hats one has changed a little bit over the years for various reasons. Hats actually used to come into Allegheny County. They, they don't anymore. But we still do meet up with them at a transfer station, which is behind the mall, so people can connect there. So we have our call center and our call center is open Monday through Friday also from 8:00 to 4:30. It's closed from 12:00 to 12:30 for lunch. And within the call center, you know, people call, I would say 90% of the calls are based on trip planning. They want to know what bus, what time, what location, and maybe return trips if they have to transfer. We also, you know, distribute schedules to anybody that asks. We do have some, some of the local stores throughout the county. They do, they will call if they have a question about non-emergency Medicaid transportation. We don't technically, we, we offer non-emergency Medicaid, but it's through the state. So essentially, we're giving them a phone number to the state, which is out of Syracuse, New York, that they have to call to set up that transportation for their non-emergency medical appointment. We do do a route deviation. I'll get more into these in the next couple of slides. We do get flag stops. And then sometimes just, you know, general information that they're calling about. So I would say our call center stays pretty, pretty busy most days, especially when the weather starts to get bad and if the buses are running a little late, whether it's bad roads or construction or anything like that. And we're also implementing some technology to make that easier for everybody, not only the call center, but the riders too. So. So I welcome any questions too, as we're going along. Feel free to, you know, stop me. So the route deviation, so we are what's called a deviated fixed route system here in Allegheny County, which means we can deviate from the fixed route up to three quarters of a mile. So it does offer a little bit of flexibility for some of our riders that might not be able to get to the fixed route. They are welcome to call us ahead of time and ask for a pickup that's, you know, a deviation from the fixed route. And as long as it's within three quarters of a mile, we're able to send the bus out there and pick them up. We do ask that they call ahead of time. Sometimes there is, we have to look at where is the bus going to turn around once they pick that person up? So there are some safety, road safety concerns that we're always looking at. But we will essentially do it every possible chance that, that we get. That is not free, and we didn't put the fares in here, but, you know, it's a dollar for a regular fare. It's a 50 cent fare for disabled older adults. But the route deviation is a $3 fee if you want us to pick you up basically at your door or within three quarters of a mile. And that is only because we are not technically a door-to-door service. So if we don't attach a fee to it, our buses would be going three quarters of a mile all day and we wouldn't get people to their destinations on time. So. Flag stops, anywhere along the fixed route, you're able to stand on the side of the road or the safest location and flag one of our buses down. And our bus will then pull over at the next safest stop and you'll be able to board the bus. So that is, any of our fixed routes, you're able to do that. We do try to promote that people call the office ahead of time. The bus drivers do have a lot of responsibility driving, you know, a fairly large bus, the passengers themselves. So they may not notice somebody on the side of the road. We do have radio communication with all of our buses. If somebody calls ahead of time, we can definitely radio out to the driver and let them know that somebody is going to be in approximate location for them to keep an eye out for them and hopefully not miss them. Does anybody have any questions on the little review of our current system?
Do you have to be disabled for them to deviate?
We don't ask that, so we don't, we don't get into specifics when it comes to that. So basically, if somebody asks, we're going to do it.
And why did Hats quit coming to Allegheny County?
Oh, it was Oats. Hats still does come. Over in Alfred, we meet up. And I'm going to let Kerry answer that. It was a little bit before my time. But they did use to come into Cuba, so she can answer that.
Do you have any, other than like the Village of Wellsville, do you have any idea like how many people in general ride your buses?
Yep. And so we do have some more of that information coming. We do track all that. I will say right now, we track everything by pen and paper. Our bus drivers track. They have a clipboard. They have every single one of those stops, those 650 stops, whichever are related to their particular route that they're driving. Every time somebody gets on the bus at a certain location, they mark it down. Every time somebody gets off the bus, they mark it down. I'm sure you guys are aware, we've brought some, uh, we had brought the contract for technology to you guys that you guys approved. We are really close on getting that up and running. We are, on the back end, it is running. We're tracking all the buses to make sure that all the GPS locations of our stops are matching what's on our schedule. So not to get too far off what you just asked, but yes, we currently track every single stop. We do have some numbers for you a little bit later in this presentation. And currently, it's all being done by pen and paper. And then, once those papers come back into the office, our office staff then puts them into spreadsheets. And so we can narrow that down. Once the technology is up and running, it will all be automatic and it will be so much easier for us. So it's a little bit of work for us to pull like a certain stop currently, but hopefully within the next month to two months, it'll all be automatic and online.
Gwen?
Yeah?
We still have the availability to plan routes through Google Maps, right?
Correct.
Which is a huge help, by the way.
Yes. Yep. Okay. So I'm going to let Kerry keep going. I think a couple of the questions will be answered a little bit later in the, the presentation, but feel free to, you know, keep asking.
Yeah, and those are really good questions. And I think what you're saying too is why we're tracking people, where they're getting on the bus. Like a little genesis, we're putting bus shelters out there because there were a lot of people out there that were waiting in the elements. So all of that is part of what we do is we continue to look at planning, continue to look at ridership and make those adjustments to the system that really make it more effective. We had a lot of, it wasn't Wellsville though. We had a lot of people that were flagging the bus down in the Stevens Street, Brooklyn Avenue. And so we actually put bus stops there so they would have a time to get on. So we're constantly monitoring, we're shifting when we need to. But there's a lot, you know, over the whole county. And Oats was housing their buses in Cuba, and then they pulled it back to continue to house their buses in Olean. So it was just taken off those, those miles between Cuba and Olean. So, so that's why they, for them to be more efficient, they, they shifted to that. Though we continue, they do come in and we meet up in the Port Vale area as well. So we're continuing looking at ways that we could be more efficient with both the systems, Hats and Oats, as we're planning and making changes. Okay, so my PowerPoint, do I just? So my eyes can't see that far, so I'm going to have to use this cup close. We were talking about that earlier, us being 42, right, Steve? So what I want to talk about is funding. I know that's been a question, and there are multiple funding streams that come in to support the system. And it gets a little complicated. So we tried to put this in there to really show you what the different funding streams are. The core is the 5311 formula grants. That's for public and there's money specifically for rural populations. So to be eligible, you have to be under $50,000, $50,000, $50,000 in population. I don't know why that's going. It's like magic. And when you look at DOT, they're looking for transportation projects that eliminate transportation barriers as well as improve mobility opportunities in rural areas. And that's what we're really trying to do. And what you'll see in a few minutes is that's how also they base their money allocations to, for different communities. The 5311 also provides money for mobility management and for capital. And that's not only for vehicles, but as you see, as we look at propane, technology, a new bus facility. This is the core funding that is applied for on behalf of Allegheny County to cover those costs. So operations. So this is what TransDev slash First Transit. It's operating the system itself. So again, the core is the 5311 allocation. So what I shared with you here is from 2008 to 2023. In 2008 and 2009, you can see what Allegheny County was allocated. It was 58, 8, and 95, 9. Those were back in those years, I think, that, Mr. Fanton, we've talked about that, the cost to the county and what that looked like. So you'll see the difference over the past many years, the allocation toward Allegheny County in 2017 was 325,000, and it, and it goes up from there. So this is the core money that is used toward operation. We, Allegheny County did get some CARES money in a couple of years, some CHRISA and ARPA, and I think we still have some CHRISA that we're spending in, in 2024. So this helps to keep the system whole, but this is just one funding stream. So Allegheny County can get up to that allocation amount of 335,000. Some years, we don't need it all, right? So this is how we make the system whole, one way. The other funding that comes into Allegheny County is what's called STOA, the State Transit Operating Assistance. So for every passenger that gets on the bus, every mile the bus runs, there's a reimbursement. So for every passenger, we get 68 cents per, per passenger and we get $1.15 per mile. So on a quarterly basis, we put a report into New York State. This was the number of passengers we had during that quarter. This was the number of miles we had during that quarter. And Allegheny County gets reimbursed for passengers and miles. So you'll see on this chart from 2018 what that looked like. So quarterly, that would be January through December. Cleanup is when DOT has extra STOA money that they haven't pushed out, they have a formula and they give everybody what's called cleanup dollars. So you'll see, again, each year, Allegheny County not only gets a 5311 allocation, they also get STOA money. So the more riders we get on those buses, the more money we get in STOA. And again, there's a cleanup on top of that that Allegheny County gets.
Kerry, the cleanup, that is also dependent upon ridership?
Mm-mm.
It's not. It's just?
It's a formula that DOT has that has STOA money that they haven't pushed out, and there's a formula and they give everybody what they, they call it cleanup money.
And we don't have to do any claiming to receive that money?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
So just really briefly, this is Gwen's favorite, I think, chart that she puts together. So this is our ridership, and I know it's kind of small. You, you probably look at, see it better in your, in your packet. But you can see in 2024, and even in 2023, we're above pre-COVID numbers. We're probably the highest ridership we've had since we've been working in the system. And those numbers are rising. And again, it's a lot of things that is happening. Again, partnering with organizations, looking at where people need to go to work, the healthcare, and to get their services. So really making sure the system is as efficient as we can. Again, you all know it. This is a rural area, 54 hours a day, five buses. There's only so much coverage we can do, but we really try to do the best we can. And our ridership, as you can see, has, it has definitely increased. And then, based on the hours against STOA, it's based on, I'm sorry, it's based on miles. So in 2022, they had us change our initial stop from First Transit to the first bus stop. So that's where you'll see those deadhead miles and the difference in there. That's the STOA. That's $1.15 per mile. Not including deadhead, no. Again, so every passenger, every mile, there's a calculation and the county gets reimbursed. And this is across the state. I mean, this is not just us. So this is STOA money that we're, that every system is able to get. So another resource and funding that comes into Allegheny County's system to pay for operation is non-emergency Medicaid, right? And so you've heard us talk years ago, they took it out of the local control and now it's through the Medical Answering Services that's based in Syracuse, right? So that's where all the brokerage is that Gwen was referring to earlier, for people with Medicaid to get to their appointments. And it's difficult at best, right, for someone in Syracuse to do that brokerage. But again, our system, we're able to, we're like probably one, maybe two others or one other in the state that's able to bill for non-emergency Medicaid transportation on our public transit system. So you'll see the next is the numbers. Because we do what we do, we continue to receive rescue money from New York State Department of Health. This was put in place when Medical Answering Service took over the brokerage. So every year, we've gotten, Allegheny County, the proverbial "we," right, we get $62,285,000 a year. And you can see on the other chart is the amount that's billed on behalf of Allegheny County for non-emergency Medicaid trips. This does not include those that were able to get on public transit and then not need Medicaid to get to their trips. You know, our, our goal is if, if you can get to your, to your trip on the public transit system to your doctor, then you're able to get to the grocery store, right? You're able to do, go to employment if, if it all lines up. So that is our goal, is to really increase ridership and those that are, that need services or are on Medicaid is to ride the public transit system. Hopefully not to bill, but we can bill and bring that money in for those that are having those medical trips.
Sorry, Kerry. So you bill based on your everyday fare schedule? So the 50 cent, one cent?
That, that's the fare. Yeah, those are fares. This is for non-emergency Medicaid. This is for people that have Medicaid that are going to an appointment.
But you're billing, are you billing back, how, you're billing back Medicaid?
Billing back Medicaid that comes back into the public transit system.
And is, that rate is higher than your everyday fare?
The 50 cents, the dollar. Yes.
How much is it?
There's a, there's a. So there's a couple of different fees and I honestly probably can't answer, actually, Lisa.
There's a boarding fee and then there's a per-mile fee.
So there's like a $10 boarding fee. Every time you get on the bus, it's $10. And then there's also a mileage fee. So it's much more expensive to go that route. We have been working with non-emergency Medicaid to be able to sell monthly passes and tokens. And there's a couple of reasons that we want to do that, even though we lose money. We don't set those rates. When we bill out in Syracuse, the brokerage, we're not the ones setting those rates. The state is. So we have been working with them in some of our areas of, we were trying to do it with all of them, don't get me wrong, but we're, we're, excuse me, selling a token or a monthly pass. Not only is it much cheaper for non-emergency Medicaid, which they're on a pretty tight contract, I think, right now. But also, if we can sell a monthly pass, it will save them a lot of money. And it also opens up the opportunity for those riders to be able to go to the pharmacy or the grocery store. It's not strictly to that one appointment or that daily appointment, whatever their schedule is. We figured it out. If you take two trips where we're billing the brokerage, you could have paid for an entire month's pass and you could have gotten to many more services throughout the county with that monthly pass. So for some reason, it's been a fight on, on some of it, and then another section, you know, they jumped right on board. So we're always looking at that thing, always looking at that and trying to make it better for, you know, the residents and not just to make money. So even though we lose money, it's still better off.
Yeah, we'd like to see that billing come down for people have, beyond the transportation system. And so a lot of the county departments do purchase tokens from DSS, Employment and Training, Akasa, which is a kind of a separate entity. But many of the county departments do buy tokens on a regular basis to get their clients or their consumers on the public transit system. And then, one of the last monies that come into operations are the fares. So again, we're probably the, one of the lowest, charging is 50 cents, like Gwen said, for older adults, veterans, those living with a disability. Dollars a regular fare, and then $30 is our monthly pass. So these, this is what the fares have come in since 2019. So for the operation of our public transit system, and that's the operation of the buses, all these different funding streams come into Allegheny County to cover those costs. And it's a lot. I know it's a lot to, and, you know, we, we work really hard to, to, to track and bring all that money into, to the county as much as we can to cover those costs. So the other money that comes into Allegheny County is for mobility management, and that's the work that we do. And so I put a chart, or we put a chart into this presentation so you can see how much money has come in to Allegheny County to do the mobility management. And there's two types of funding. Again, one is the 5311 for mobility management and another one is Appalachian Development money.
Kerry, can you give us a definition of mobility management?
So it's interesting. We go, we, we sit on the New York State Association for Mobility Managers. We, we're in a lot of different organizations. And I think if you've seen one mobility manager, you've seen one mobility manager. So some mobility managers work really hard to publicize their routes, or they may do travel training, right? I think we're kind of unique. The, what we do is, is essentially all the activities around getting the money. getting the money, RFPs, procurement, reporting, applications. So we really, working with this team from Allegheny County, does probably more than any mobility management, mobility management that we've seen in the county. A lot of times, it's under the county's planning department, right? Or it's under, like the city of Olian is Oats. Hats is a different, a different way they're set up as well. So everyone is kind of different. I don't know if I answered your question, but...
There is a definition of mobility management, and it's creating partnerships in transportation with transportation providers in a community or region to enhance multimodal travel options, and then developing means to effectively communicate those options to the public. So that's right out of our contract with you.
It's a nice broad, I love that. Thanks, Chris. And for us, we do have the call center that's open Monday through Friday, 8:00 to 4:30. Again, it's a lot of tracking. We ask of TransDev First Transit for a lot of data. We have them do on-time performance, right? So we spot check and make sure that the buses are on time, and if not, why aren't they? Right? So we do a lot of quality insurance with that provider, as well as many other things that we do. So we're holding them to task. Yep.
Do you ever do any special ones? I'm thinking like at the Allegheny County Fair, if people want to take transportation to the fair, is it possible? And say, special things like the Office of the Aging has a senior picnic at the fairgrounds for something like that? Do you, can you make arrangements to make transportation for county residents to such an event?
Right, so they have to be public, and if there was something like that, we could, there's still would be an increased cost to TransDev, the operator, to do it. We just would have to publicize those routes as being public, and where would we pick people up? We have kicked around that idea a couple of times before. It's making sure we have enough vehicles, enough people to operate those vehicles, and then have enough time to publicize it. And money to pay for it. It'd be great, because that is, those are the events, you're really moving a lot of people, for sure. So the, one of the last fundings that have come into Allegheny County is funding for capital. Right, so again, this is, we apply for this under 5311. There's two funding streams that come to Allegheny County for capital. But you can see over there, the course of the year, some of the things that we have gone after and have procured for Allegheny County, it's definitely the buses. And I'm looking at 2024, out of 5311, we're looking at technology, we're looking at propane conversion, charging stations, and then that bus facility that we're just getting down the road. We just got our contract for the first two phases of that. And then the other funding stream that comes in Allegheny County for capital is what's called ATC money, accelerated transit capital. And you could see on an average, it's a little over 50, around 53,000 a year that comes into Allegheny County, and this money requires no match. This is strictly DOT money, comes into Allegheny County, and there's no match. And you can see some of the items that we have been, we've been able to procure are those that we're going after.
Those are competitive grants, right?
No.
Oh, they're not?
They just say, here's, here's your ATC money for this year. Sometimes we bank it, we've unbanked it, so now it's ready to go if we need it. But we can use it for anything with a useful life over five years now as a capital item, and there's no match for that.
Are you going to be forced into going electric, like the school districts?
We're not going to be forced into, and that's why we're going propane first. All right, if we had to go electric, we'd have to have two buses to everyone that we're on the road now. And then you think about the mileage, right? They get out, and how do you...
I know, but that's not stopping them from doing it with the school districts. I just wonder, are you going to be next?
No, we won't be, no, they talk about that. But there are some school districts that's already gone propane. Henrietta up in Rochester, they, I think almost their whole fleet now is propane. So the people, I think, are looking at those alternatives to really low, low admissions, and that's what the direction, and that's the projection we're on right now, is to go propane. Hopefully by the end of the year, we get our buses, they're slated to be to us in October, we should hopefully be up and running on propane by the end of the year. That's our goal. So I know that's a lot around funding, but that really does give you a sense of all the different funding streams that are coming into Allegheny County. Do you want to talk about, oh, do you want me to? Sure, sure.
So just to add on to a couple of things that Carrie had mentioned, we did see New York State DOT in person a couple of weeks ago, and they did say that only, there's only seven or eight transit agencies throughout New York State that have reached pre-COVID ridership numbers, and so we're one of them. So not to pat ourselves on the back, but we're pretty proud of that. It was a struggle, right? Everything that has anything to do with COVID was a struggle. So we're going to continue to work really hard to increase that ridership. One of my favorite stories that I tell, and it doesn't, it's not directly related to what we do every single day, but a story I like to say, I was at the pharmacy, I was talking with a friend. A woman calls the pharmacy and says, "I'm in a non-emergency Medicaid transportation ride, going home from my doctor's appointment. I need to be able to pick up my prescription." The driver of the non-emergency Medicaid says, "We can't make any extra stops. You are not allowed to stop at the pharmacy for that medication." The pharmacy decided that they would get the medication ready, and the pharmacist's tech would walk outside, the non-emergency Medicaid driver would veer the car off, slow down, and the tech threw the prescription in the car. Now, this is a real live story that I just happened to be standing there to witness. So you know, there's lots of limitations when it comes to any one of the services that are offered as far as transportation is concerned, right? Non-emergency Medicaid is no exception to that. It's literally, you can only go to your doctor's appointment and back. It doesn't do that resident any good to go to the doctor's appointment if she can't, doesn't have a way to pick up her medication, right? Like she was going to the doctor because she has some sort of issue, she needs something. But I think that that's just a prime example of every single day what we're working towards for our residents. And I don't know who the woman was, I don't know where she lives, I have no idea whether she could have gotten on public transit to come back for that, but she was desperate enough to call ahead of time and ask them if they could literally throw it through the window so that he didn't have to stop. So just something to think about when, you know, I'm going to make the assumption that every single one of us in this room probably drove here today, and based on the parking lot, I'm going to really assume a lot of people drove here today. So just imagine, you know, if you didn't have a vehicle available to you to get around, and how terrible it would be to try to just reach your basic needs, whether it's groceries or the pharmacy, or even visiting a friend. We all know that, you know, you need that social interaction. You can't, you can't be out in the middle of nowhere with no connections to anybody. So I just wanted to touch base on a couple of those things. I think our last slide, as far as our current transit system is, was just some of the projects that we're working on. I know you guys have heard me up here about propane. I think we are, we're about a year and a half that the whole propane project started. We are close. We do have a bid for the supply and tank that we are accepting. All of those things will start to come to you guys as far as like contracts and that kind of thing. Obviously, buses, we're always needing to replace our buses. We ran about 419,000 miles last year, so that's a lot of miles that are going on our buses. Gary, I'll touch base on what you said about like the Office for the Aging and stuff like that. We've had lots of conversations around that, and we have recently even looked more into it. The problem is, we've had two buses down with engine replacements, and so we haven't had the availability. We do take a bus to the Office for the Aging's picnic, so if anybody wanted to take a look at it or test out the wheelchair lift or anything like that, they are all ADA compliant. I had some great conversations with some of those participants at that picnic last year, and it was a lot of, well, I don't need it right now, but I might need it in the future. And so my goal is to, you know, get out there and work with those people so that they can learn it now, so when they might need it in the future, they know, you know, how to use the system and whatnot. I will say, I'm also scheduled to work with DSS and their units to do some trainings, and I'll also be going to the Department of Health's Summer Retreat Day to do some transportation. So again, we are working with all of these different departments and whatnot. I think in the years past, it's been daunting, to say the least, to look at a schedule, now that we do have Google Maps, and the same type of information is going to be available on our technology side, too. You'll actually be able to see the bus live exactly where it's traveling. So we've got some really exciting, great options coming to hopefully make all of our lives easier. So again, just some of our projects that were there.
Do you want to go with?
Sure.
Oh, we can go together, yeah. So again, we'll go back to one of the main reasons right here is that Olian Area Transit System is coming to an end December 31st, 2024, and it has a lot of impact. You know, again, we met with New York State DOT. The question was, can we, can Allegheny County, can we do a regionalization and take on that system? So, yep? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Get too far back. So Brendan, if you have the presentation? And actually, one of the, Gwen and I attended a meeting of their county planning department like one and a half months ago, and the intent was to do their county plan and the coordinated plan. The conversation then turned to the Olian Area Transit System and that they're ending their service. And I have to tell you, that room was totally devastated. There was the Office for the Aging, multiple providers, mental health and others that said, "This is, this is a critical issue, because we're unable to get the people where they need to go." And they, and into the services to employment, similar to why we're doing what we do here. So currently, the Olian Area Transit System is under the city of Olian. They hold a contract with New York State DOT. To give you a sense, this is their ridership, and you can see what is combined over the past many years, and they are on, like we are on, an increased trajectory of the number of riders on that system. Their funding is similar to ours, so they get the New York State DOT operating money, like we do, they get an allocation. They get capital for their buses. They also get Appalachian Development, STOA. So again, based on the number of passengers and miles, they get reimbursed the STOA. They get the ATC money as well, that capital that doesn't have a match. Their fares. They also have partners. So listed in here, they have the City of Salamanca, Carrick County Department of Social Services, St. Bonaventure in tandem, and the Seneca Nation of Indians, all contribute money as partners into their system. We don't have that currently, but that, that's how their system is made up, and not only do they get the money from New York State DOT, but they're serving the clients and consumers of many of these organizations, and so they're investing in this system, the Olian Area Transit System. So impact on Allegheny County. So there are, there are things that we're looking at, if that Oats system were to go away. Right now, our contract with TransDev, formerly First Transit, is one of those things that we're concerned about. The connectivity across the southern tier, the opportunity to meet the needs of our residents here in Allegheny County, and then regionalization. So when we look at the TransDev contract, you know, we just went through a negotiation, and what they do is they have multiple systems that they're leveraging the funding, right? So their shared office staff, their shared drivers, maintenance staff, the facilities that they're in, right? So they're serving multiple contracts who are sharing those costs. So if one of those contracts go away, you know, what is that ripple effect on the remaining contracts in that area? So that is one of the concerns, is, you know, what would happen if that Oats system went away?
Carrie?
Yes.
Other than Allegheny County and Oats, what other entities contract with TransDev in this area?
So they, we tried to figure out Total Senior Care was, right? Then Total Senior Care is a 5310 provider who's based in Olian. They have a residence in Cuba that they take to there. Again, the Seneca Nation of Indians is another one that they have under that contract as well. Am I missing one? I think those are the three, and Oats. And Oats.
So we're the largest?
We're the largest.
Where else do they operate regionally or statewide? Do you know?
A lot.
A lot?
Yeah. Yep.
Buffalo, Rochester area, or no?
Not, because those are more of a transit authorities, but more in the rural areas, Cortland and those areas. So they have multiple contracts in different areas across the state. So connectivity to Allegheny County residents, we looked at where our riders from Allegheny County are going into Olian area, and these were the top ones, the Carrick County Department of Social Services, Dresser Rand, you know, moving all those, coming out of Welsel, moving into the Olian area, the YMCA, Olian General Hospital in Boise. So these were some of the top ones that we tracked of Allegheny County residents going into Olian area. The other thing to know is that it's, Oats is a connector from the Seneca Nation of Indians. You'll see all the way over on the left where their routes are. They go all the way up to Irving, come down into Salamanca, to the border. They hook up with Olian Area Transit, right, which comes across the Olian area and then hooks up with us. We hook up with Hats, Hats hook up with Corning, Corning hooks up with Shimon. So across the southern tier, the mobility managers have really worked hard on making those connections, so if people needed to go where they needed to go, across county borders, they could. So that would be a huge gap. I mean, we would have a, there would not be that connection between Allegheny County and going further west. We also look at the opportunities for Allegheny County residents for employment. We're looking at, you know, the possibility that we could explore going to Franklinville, right, for, for employment, a big employer, the cheese factory moved up there. Are there other, are there other needs of Allegheny County residents that could be met by making a regional system? We could also go down to one call center versus multiple call centers. And again, people do go across the board for, border for health and human services. I mean, our Child Advocacy Center, right, there's, I don't know if they drive the public transit to that, but there are those, the health and human service agencies that are across the border for that. And also, regionalization would improve efficiency and level of resources. And I'll be, I'll be frank with you. I mean, one of the reasons why Olian is not keeping that contract and operating Oats is you need to wait for the money from DOT. DOT is not the quickest entity, well, what state agency is, right, to get the money back from. And so they were waiting on money that was coming to them, but it was a long time. So they had, they were struggling with waiting for money from DOT. We do the same thing, we hound them, you know, we get the money, but it's not going to be tomorrow that that money's going to come down the pike. It's going to be, it could be a year, it could be two years before they see that money. And that's why they struggled, I think, the city of Olian, to be able to continue the service, because they're waiting on, on money from the state. We met with the New York State DOT. They're in favor of us exploring it, but it's really all up to you if you want us to continue to look at this opportunity and explore it further and bring you back more information. It's really up to you.
So I've been reading in the Times Herald about the situation in Olian, and what you were talking about, that they got a lot of money that's owed to them, but in the meantime, they've got shortfall of operating cash, apparently. So how are we getting around that, and they're not being able to get around that?
I think, I mean, the county is, has, I think, deeper pockets, per se, right, than than the, than the city of Olian. So they're pulling that money out. Again, they do have some money coming in from those five contracts that are, it's like 20,000 for some, 14,000 for some, but it's not enough for them to wait on that money to come in. I think they may be waiting, I don't know, like half a million dollars right now to come in from DOT. It's coming, it's due to them, but the process is daunting.
I'm speculating, too, here, but they did all of their, their work, the actual work involved with operating a transit system in-house, right, the city did. So it could be just an issue, not just, but that could be another factor why they felt the need to get out, is they, maybe they just didn't feel like they had the staff available to manage the system. I'm not sure.
They definitely have said that, and they don't get mobility management money, but they do have a contract... And they don't get mobility management money, but they do have a contractor that does help with some of those pieces. But yes, I think a lot of it fell on the city of Oleane to do the mobility management pieces for that system.
I guess one question I have is, did they approach Cataragus County and why would they not support it in their own area?
So, they did approach Cataragus County. I don't, I can't speak on behalf of the, the county administrator, but they did try to approach them. And that, I think originally, the Oates system was under the county. Then it temporary, was temporary, went to the city of Oleane. And that's where it has remained. And I think the other struggle would be is getting something up and running by January 1st would be, would be more than difficult. And I do welcome, anybody else that's been in those meetings, to, to join me in, in answering those questions, but.
Yeah. We've come a long way, right?
We have come a long way.
Yeah. You've done a great job. My fear is you tie yourselves in with a, a group that hasn't come a long way. I mean, I, I don't understand why they would think that we should, and that's what you're asking, is basically, our pocket needs to get deeper. Am I right? In order to support their operation and I, I just, there's no way that I can wrap my head around that kind of a joint operation. I just, I'm sorry, that's just where I'm at, but you girls, and not your whole staff, I don't know how many you have there, but you've done a great job doing what you're doing.
Thank you.
And I'd hate to see you get tied in with a group like that that doesn't know what they're doing, apparently.
Well, I think they, oh, I'm sorry.
I agree with some of what he's saying, but if the Oleane system goes down, that's going to be a detriment to Allegheny County residents. Is that correct?
It would have impact. I don't know about a detriment, but it would have impact on the Allegheny County residents, for sure. And I, and I, you know, you look at all those other departments that they have between mental health and officer of the aging, and, and yes, it's a, you go back and forth. Trust us, we, we've gone back and forth as well. I think they've done a good job in their system because you're looking at that ridership, right? So, they're, they must be doing some planning and doing really good work because their numbers are rising as well to get there. I, I think the rub is there's a wait for reimbursement. They owe that money. They've done their, they've done everything they need to do. They're just, like us, and like many other, across New York State, we're waiting on the money to be reimbursed. So.
Maybe the Indians would like to step up. A lot of their bus routes go out there.
So, they, they do contribute to the Oates system. So, they can't really come off reservation. So, that's where you see, they do contribute to the Oates system to connect this side from Allegheny, Cataragus to the Seneca Nation of Indians. So, they monetarily give them money into their system to connect.
They got deep pockets.
Would, would your organization, if you were to, to take over that, that Oleane district, would your organization have to add more personnel or?
Yeah.
So, but those costs would be covered, just like they're cost covered right now.
Right.
But the fact that it's two different counties, the same organization, can, are you going to be able to, to submit a request for funding together? Or would you have to do it each individually and?
I, I think that would be up to the board to decide if we're tracking it separately. I mean, some systems do go regional. So, it isn't just county by county and you're tracking it county by county. I think that would be a decision of the board, is do you apply as a region or do you keep them separate and track them separate?
Thank you. Mr. Healy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, I share Dwight's fans' concerns there. And we have come a long way in Allegheny County as far as the system, system goes. And I, I think it meets the needs of our constituents nicely at this point. But I'm just afraid if, if we took their, Cataragus County's responsibilities, that the system over there and the services, I mean, it's just going to cost us money here and it's going to, I bet those services would expand over there and we'd, we'd end up subsidizing more of it. And if revenue goes away, what do we do then? Do we turn away the, the services? I, I'd rather we just stayed at home here myself. Thank you.
And thank you, I appreciate that. I mean, I, I know we've had a lot of conversations as well. And I think that the, the goal is that it wouldn't cost Allegheny County anything, right? It's really Oates system. And those providers and those five contracts, we heard from many of them at that meeting is, you know, if we need to, you know, we'll put more money in. That's how, I don't say desperate, that's how critical that Oleane Area Transit System is to them. So, I mean, the last thing we wanted, we would ask is that Allegheny County puts in money for that system. What we would do is, is run that system and, and get, the county would get reimbursed for that, like we do with over here.
I, I think that concerns about county money being expended or county dollars being required to prop up Oates, I think that can be protected against contractually. I, I just do. I think if, if you took the time and effort to ensure that all the agreements with those partners were in place, that, you know, DOT, when we talked to them the other day, they're very comfortable in that, those funding sources. They're not going away, if anything, they're increasing. But even if state and federal funding like that was to disappear, you just have to enter into agreements that protect the county in the event that that happens. In other words, you drop them like a bad habit and you move on. I, I understand people's concerns. I told Carrie and Gwen, here, here's the concerns of the board. Board, I'm assuming, we want to do what's best for Allegheny County. That's what we're here, we're hired to do, that's why we're here. We're not here to do what's best for the residents of Cataragus County. We're not here to be the pocketbook for the city of Oleane or Cataragus County. But that's a genuine concern. Like, why on earth doesn't Cataragus County just pick this thing up? They've, they don't have, I think, the fund balance that we have, but they've got pockets deep enough to float $500,000 every once in a while. So, I think maybe that would be a first step for me, would be to further engage with Cataragus County and say, what are we missing here? Why, why aren't you guys stepping up? Maybe, Carissa, you've already had that conversation?
Yeah.
I, I have had that conversation and the very general answer that I, that I've received is they just haven't done it in so long that, you know, they're a board looking at a very new issue they haven't dealt with in years. Whereas this board, you deal with it every day with our own contract. It's a different, it's like an extension of what we already have. Whereas for that board, it's a brand-new concept. They haven't contributed, I don't believe. They haven't dealt with it as a county-run program in, I think, over a decade. It's difficult for them to go from nothing to something. That's the general sense I have.
Right.
Yeah. We were in the situation when we first started talking about this and, and we, as a county, stepped up. And we actually used quite a lot of general fund money to start with to keep this thing going. So, basically, I, my opinion is it's time for Cat County to step up if they want to keep this going because we, we sacrificed to start with, and Carrie can tell you how much we spent to keep it afloat the first two or three or four years. And it was considerable amount of money. So, congratulate you again, you've done a great job. I don't, I just am very uncomfortable with tying in with an operation that's not doing what they need to do in Cat County, not stepping up.
Steve?
Thank you. Okay, what if? Let me give you a what if. What if hypothetically, we went into this agreement and we did what we needed to do in order to make sure this bus service continues with an agreement and a timeline that it transfers to Cat County at the end of four years, three years, five years? What if we did something like that? And a second part of my question is, if we do prop this up, and I, I know we've talked in general terms, what's in it for us, Allegheny County, if this service is propped up and continues to run versus if it stops?
Those are both very good questions. I mean, I, I think that would, I think what we're looking for today is, is, does the board want us to continue to explore and ask those questions? I mean, it hasn't been public, so we didn't do, we didn't ask those specific questions. And that's a good one. Is it able to, to transfer back over to Cat County and, at some point? You know, a lot of things are going regional, right? You know, you're looking at a lot of those regional authorities in Buffalo and Rochester, they're multiple counties, right? So, I think regionalization is, it depends on how we look at it. Is it separate? Are we going at it as, as, on a regional basis? So, there's efficiencies to be had collectively than, than to having two call centers and, and two contracts, but, but it can happen that way. And I agree. I mean, I, I, the last thing, I don't want Allegheny County to put a penny into, to that system, but I think there's a way to work them together. I don't know if I answered your. Okay. Did I answer your question? Okay.
I would be in favor of you folks continuing to explore this. And I think that's what you just said, you're just looking for the go-ahead to continue to explore this. And I, I would be in favor of that.
And just before we get to the next question, I, I think that, that one little snippet you had in there about the contract and about some of those shared administrative costs between the two, I think, we do have to recognize that even beyond that, I think there's a potential financial benefit in increased leverage for future contract negotiations. And I think, on the flip side of that, I, I'm worried about TransDev, and I don't want to get into contract negotiating stuff, but I worry that that entity would have to get a lot more out of Allegheny County in order to justify their existence in this neck of the woods if they didn't have an, an Oates next door. Because of all that, that shared administrative costs and, I don't know if we share staff or not, like if their bus drivers go back and forth or anything.
I think they do go back and forth.
You know, that, that's just another thought. Mike?
Well, I don't know why, if, if Cataragus County and the city of Oleane like these services, I don't know why they, they can't just do it themselves, even if they did in a partnership. I mean, you guys are still going to be running the system, making contact with you to run the system, you know? And we could still have one call center and everything else. We can streamline the cost for them and maybe possibly for us, too, in a partnership. But, but I would think that'd be a lot more advisable than, than Allegheny County taking over Cataragus County's responsibilities. Thank you.
Carrie?
As I said, Oleane, Cataragus County are kind of looking at this because they see that how success, successful that you have been. And, and I may be wrong, but they just say, why don't we let them do it? Because they know what, what they're, what they're doing and shed, we, sheds us of the responsibility. I favor, in general terms, what, what you're talking about, obviously, with no detriment to the taxpayers of Allegheny County. That's the number-one concern. But I really do think it's because they, they don't know what they're doing. And, and of course, the, the fact that they're, the delay in getting their, their money is, is a major factor also. But you've been able to prove that you can, you can do it. And I think they'd like to share that expertise.
Yeah, and it, they haven't, they're still exploring, they did go to Southern Tier West. So, they have gone to other entities, too. And again, it's, it's pretty similar. I mean, the money has to go to a county, to a government entity, right? So, that's, that's the rub on this money. It can't go to us nonprofit for us to run it. It's county, it goes to a governmental agency is where that money, 5311, goes to. So, that's the other piece of it. Yeah, and, and again, I, I think for us, if, if public transit were to go away tomorrow, it would be detrimental to this communities across our county. And I, and I feel that, you know, for Cataragus County, that's the, that would be critical to have that piece out of the system along the southern tier. And it does impact our residents. So, it is up to all of you if you choose to have us continue to explore. I mean, we haven't gone to those subcontracts to say, what are you willing to put into the system? We haven't done anything because it hasn't been public and we haven't had feedback from all of you to, to explore it further.
Jim, then Dwight?
Yeah. Yeah, it's just, they may be running a very good system, I don't know that. But the question is, why won't Cataragus County put the money up front that they know they're going to get back? I don't understand that. And I don't understand why they think we should do it. I just don't, I can't comprehend that.
And I, I think those are questions probably only Cataragus County could answer for you. I, I do know that the current Oates system only operates in Oleane with a short run up to Allegheny for Bonaventure students. So, for them, that would be, or for you guys, for that'd be the equivalent of a bus system that only operates in Wellsville and having only a few legislators really invested in having constituents that are benefiting from it. That could be the other part of that equation that's tough for them to grasp, taking this over. If, if the board decides this is something you're interested in, in my mind, Oates is, is gone. And this is just an extension of our current system into Oleane to pick up some of those needs that were there, working with the partners that we know would be interested in giving us money outside of the state DOT claims. I would not think of it as picking up Oates. I would think of it as filling a void after Oates no longer exists. That, in my mind, how it works.
Jim?
So, if I can just add to, you're talking, the difference in systems is, is, Oates did, I think, 139,000 miles last year where we did 419,000 miles. So, it's a much smaller system. And, and it does run out to the Seneca Nation, but that's that connection, to be able to get you across the county. And we actually do have a significant amount of ridership that does catch each system to get all the way across the county, so.
Okay, Mr. Rumpf.
So, and one of the questions was asked how it affects some people in Allegheny County, what it does for Allegheny County. I can attest that there's one person in Cuba, she lost her license for six months to medical programs. She worked in Salamanca and if Oates wasn't there and if we let it go away, she would have not have been able to get to work, would have lost her job. So, I mean, that's a positive, we keep it on a positive note. She said, and I mean, she's driving now and doesn't eat now, but if it wasn't there then, she wouldn't have had a job because that's how she got to work in Salamanca, so.
Mr. Healy?
Just a little food for thought, that Cat County Administrator's been there for over 20 years, very well-respected guy, ask any of the legislators in Cat County. So, he was there when they had it and they dumped it off on Oleane and he doesn't want it back. So, I would look into that a little deeper. There's got to be some more underlying reasons.
Mr. Stockton?
Just totally, 100% in favor of you continuing this exploration of this because I hear people saying things that if, if this were to happen, that would cover that objection, et cetera, et cetera. And I don't think we have enough information yet on those things. By all means, continue.
Any other thoughts, questions? Do you have enough Mealy support to, really, they put a lot of time into this and it's going to take a lot exponentially more time for them to get us, like, real information. So, if this is a non-starter, then we need to save themselves their sanity and, and let them know. I think you have enough legislators probably that, that would like more information. You may, you may have a couple forever knows, but I think, for me personally, I actually would like to see, get a little granular and see what are these agreements with the entities other than DOT? What do those contracts look like? What, how much influence and impact do they have on the routes and the scheduling? And how much flexibility, if this all went, you know, went to you, how much flexibility would you have, not just on those routes, but on the routes in general? You know, I'm not a no on it yet personally, but I'm, I'm with everybody that's saying more information and more particular information. And then, I think we need to hear, not today necessarily, sorry, Terry, but we need to hear from the Treasury a little bit, too, about, you know, because there's a lot of work that comes out of the Treasury's office in support of our. our existing system. So, unless eight people want to stand up now and say, find something better to do with your time, or I think more information, does that sound good?
I would support it. I have a lot of concern. I was involved, standing on the TransDev when we negotiated that. I'm very concerned with the cost. We had to browbeat it pretty hard to get us where we're at. I can't imagine if one of them goes away.
Let's talk timeline a little bit before we lose you. So, you said December 1 is when they're talking about discontinuing service?
December 1st, end of December.
End of December?
Yeah.
So, in reality, that would require a fresh negoti, say, say the board says, go for it. That would require a fresh negotiation with TransDev, right?
That would, we would be working with DOT. They did put and responded to an RFP last year or the beginning of this year. We wouldn't know if we would continue that. They could, their contract with first TransDev is until the end of December. They had submitted an RFP. So, that would be a conversation that we have with New York State DOT on how we would, how we would do that operation piece of it. If it would just be an extension of the current contract, if we go back to negotiations. So, we'd have to work with DOT to really define how, what all our options are there.
Do you feel comfortable that you could achieve that by the end of the year?
I think we're going to have a lot of work to do. But I mean, I think it's, yeah. I mean, I think DOT is in total support of it. So, we have to have those conversations quickly. They don't want to see it go away. Once a public transit system goes away, you can't get it back. It is so critical to the people in these counties to, and the residents to have that option to get where they need to go. So.
I have a question. Is there any thought in your mind that if you did this, that you'd actually start taking over other routes in Cataragus County and all the rest of that?
We would have the option to.
Well, that's.
Yes. We would. I mean, if you're looking at employment, you're looking at some of those key employers right now with residents of Allegheny County go to, we would look at that. Where, where regional, where across these two areas, do people need to get to? We worked really hard to get ours to senior living, the healthcare institutions, employment. We did our roots to make sure we were getting people where they needed to go, they could get on the public transit system. We would, not by January 1st, but we would take a look at what those routes are, where they're going, how do we become more efficient? And how do we, do our connections become more efficient? I mean, that would give us a lot of opportunity and a lot of leverage to do that.
That's what scares me.
The other person we've had on the last round of conversations, we did have Tom Windus from DPW on our last mobility management meeting. Because obviously, we're doing so many projects that tie into DPW right now. And his thought is, if the board's interested in doing this and we start committing it, we really do want to know because that will change the scope of what we're building for the transportation facility. If we're looking at extra buses or anything like that, that could change some of that. And we would want to put that in those plans before we lock into what we have now.
Yeah. There's just a lot more to talk about, I think. Is that enough for today? Anyone want last word?
I'll just say one last thing.
I knew she would.
Um, you know, it is more work, right? And there is a lot going on. So, I don't, I don't ever want us to downplay that, you know, every one of those partnerships has to have a contract. And hopefully, the idea is we create one contract and then we can just duplicate it for all of them, changing the price and the dollar amounts and whatnot. But there does have to be a level of commitment from everybody in this room that would go into anything like this. Because as much as Kerry and I can do all the work we can possibly on the back end, you know, ultimately, it comes to this room for the final say. So, just, you know, we want to be transparent and let you know. It's just something to think about. But otherwise, thank you for having us today. We can definitely, you know, spend some time gathering some more information. Like Kerry said, we didn't, it wasn't public. We wanted to talk to you guys first. So, we can go back and work on that.
Thank you for taking all the time. I actually really benefited from the first half of that because it had been a while since we'd gotten a refresh on, on all the funding and all the services you guys are providing. So, that was really beneficial to me because I had no idea what, you know, STOWA was until about half an hour ago. So, appreciate that. And, you know, let's just plan on, on getting back together as soon as you can get more information. We'll schedule something and keep hammering away at it.
Yeah. So, you had mentioned a timeline. Did you want to set, give us a timeline or?
Not right now.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
I have to take the joke.
Right.
We'll do our best. Thank you, guys.
Okay. So, we've actually got, we've got about 12 minutes before we're scheduled to have our executive session. We actually need, came through, an executive session prior to that executive session to cover a couple of quick things. And we'll be as fast as we can, guys. But would someone like to make a motion to go into executive session to discuss the employment history of a particular individual? Thank you, Mr. Havy. Thank you my Mr. Curran. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? And we're in executive session.